It's breath, air.
It's air.
It's air.
Well, here's-
But then you're yawning.
Here's the weird thing, though. I have this like systemic response. I start yawning when I get cold. Like if I get shivery, I start yawning. Why is that? Is it a lack of oxygen?
Probably. I just read this whole thing on yawning.
Yeah, it's this R.
What variety?
So yeah, just say R.
Perfect.
So when you hear me in my little space going, "R."
We're live.
I really am.
Relax.
Call our meeting to order. Oh, thank you. All right, so we actually already opened our meeting at nine thirty, so this is a continuation of that meeting. So, uh, we don't see any guests here, but my normal instructions be to sign the, um, the record or the, the sign-in sheet, so we have it for the record. When speaking, uh, come to the podium, please say and spell your name for the record. I'll open our regular commission meeting on, uh, public comment with any subject not on the agenda that was in the commissioner's jurisdiction, any public comment.
I have two quick things.
Okay.
There was a very small fire this morning up at Clarkson. Two, four acre, something like that, they're already mopping it up, but it's just a, was a wake-up call to me that it's the season, and it was a, not a house fire, it was a wildlife, wild property fire, and so let's keep our fingers crossed and, and be alert when you, when you see things out there. Uh, and the offices are closed the fourth of July, Thursday.
Okay. Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Okay, hearing none, we'll roll into our first agenda item. So at the close of our meeting again, open up a public hearing for, uh, the final budget FY twenty-four, twenty-five. Um, I will hand it over to our county administrative officer, Bill Giraki.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, ladies and gentlemen. Today's like Christmas. All the budgets are done. Get ready to, uh, although I don't feel quite like Santa Claus, to tell you the truth. Uh, what I want to do is I want to talk a little bit about the process, and then I want to talk about the budget, and then, uh, answer questions, of course, and then we'll, um, look at the budget resolution. Okay, so, process. I have to admit that, um, that I was late getting all, getting the process, not getting the process going, but getting everything built, uh, this year for the budgeting process. And it crammed, uh, a lot of work into the last couple of weeks. Uh, key people that I need to talk to were not available, and, um, I just had to roll with it, based on earlier discussions, et cetera. So, every department, you see, uh, a worksheet like this. This is the, uh, budget worksheet that we're going to use now and into the future. And it's designed not only to be a budget, but also to be a financial management system for the budget. I'm using legal services as an example, so you can see how it's constructed. In the upper left-hand side of the worksheet, usually everybody, every budget starts with, uh, personnel cost. You'll notice that in the preliminary budget column, most, some of those cells are white. The reason those are white is because all of that information is being directly pulled from Debbie Kelly's, uh, wage sheets. Both for general, uh, employees as well as the, uh, public safety department, there are two separate wage sheets for that. So within each one of those calculations, we know how much each employee makes, what their fringe benefits are, and those are totaled in, uh, and that establishes the, the salary side of the budget. Below that, depending on the department, our number of, of, uh, operation and maintenance sections, and these are, in most cases, they're orange, in that the department sets those budgets, and the commission, um, the commission adjusts those budgets coming into today's meeting for the final budget. The history of the expenses are on the far right-hand side, I'm not going to go all the way over to the right, but it's summarized by these spark lines, and the spark lines show for every actual expense, whether it's personnel or operations and maintenance, it shows the pattern of those expenditures over time. This we started a few years ago when I was consulting, and now that I'm handling the budget duties, uh, with the finance team, we are going to load the budget and actuals for every year that we have available, meaning that the spark line pattern will be even more meaningful, uh, in the future. Uh, again, this is, those are, spark lines representing the actuals. The idea of having the actuals there is to guide the department heads into establishing a preliminary budget estimate for those expense items. Another way they do that is not only looking at the history, but also looking at what happened this year. These three, uh, brighter blue columns represent the actual expenditures at the end of each quarter. The first fuchsia column represents a forecast of those expenditures based on the first three quarters. Now, when we look at the expenses, we look to see if those expenditures are even over the year, or if there's a particular quarter where they jump. And so the forecasts, which are made based on the close of the last quarter, are fairly accurate, but sometimes we override those forecasts with our decision in the orange column, uh, for the particular line items. The column next to that, the second fuchsia column, if you see the colors, green, red, white, and yellow, that represents the forecasted performance for that, uh, item for the year. If it's green, that means that it's between zero and ninety-five percent of the budget amount. If it's yellow, it's between ninety-five percent and a hundred percent of the budget. And if it's red, that means that the budget was over expended, or anticipated to be over expended. If it's white, that means that that item was not budgeted at all. So when you, as a department, uh, head, look at your line items, you may see that you didn't budget anything this year, but you may have budgeted things in the past. Over time, we will fine-tune the number of accounts that are available for everybody to look at. Uh, each one of the sections has a subtotal, and at the bottom of the page, we look at the total expenses for each one of the activities which are in the department. So in legal services, we have the administrative expense, then we have a general legal services, which is blank, did not have, um, a budget this year, and then the last one is the crime, crime victims assistance program, and then a grand total is created, which is carried over to the revenue side. Remember that, when I, my philosophy is to build budgets based on expenses. So even though money may be available, we only need to fund what you need to spend this year. Below that is a summary of the personnel expenses, and then at the very bottom, this cell right here, if you can't read it, I'll tell you what it says, ninety-two point five six percent. Ninety-two point five six percent of the legal services funds budget is personnel-related. That's calculated for all of the departments, and that's carried forward into the summary sheet, which I'm going to show you in a few minutes. This year, starting in July, you will have your budgeted amount in this column, and then at the end of each quarter, I will meet with the department heads and staff to talk about the financial performance at the end of that quarter. What it means, though, for budgeting next year, and this is kind of a silver lining, is that we will have actuals at the close of the third quarter, which we can use with the forecast to start budgeting in April. The quarter ends in March, the finance team will close the books on your accounts, and we will begin budgeting preliminary budgets in April. It's a big difference from what we did this year. Everything that's been constructed will stay, will not have to be reconstructed, so the budget structure that you see will be intact for next year and years to come. All of this information, then, historically, is available for us to use. Now, how does this interact with Black Mountain? This is a separate system from Black Mountain that's fed by the information in Black Mountain that, that is, uh, updated on daily basis, when claims are submitted and paid, et cetera, when payroll is made. All of that information in Black Mountain is what we use to populate these three columns of actual data. Okay? So that's the expenditure side, and, um, in the case of legal services, their bottom line, grand total, they, they're expected to spend in this fiscal year eighty-five point nine percent of eighty-six percent of their budget. What happens to the money left over? Well, it rolls back into our, our, our cash balances. We didn't spend it, so that's where it's going to go. And what you'll see today is that to construct the budgets this year, we use cash balance to make it work. Going to the revenue side of the worksheet, the total of expenses is pulled into the revenue side of the budget, right here, this number, their total expenses were five hundred and fifty-four thousand, nine hundred and fifty-four dollars, eighty cents. Then, we look at all the sources of revenue, historically, sources of revenue for legal services, and we forecast. We put a budget forecast in. Now, if the amounts of money that are available in the orange column are not enough to fund the budget, then in many cases, real property taxes are calculated for that department. And on the right-hand side, you can see how they're calculated. Hundred ninety-eight thousand, nine hundred and twenty-two dollars and eighty cents is needed to balance this budget. At twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars per mill, value of countywide mill, they need seven point two nine mils. Their cash balance, the CIP is shown, and then we didn't use the expense or the non-personnel cost reduction calculators for this budget. In the end, then, we matched their expenses with revenues that they have and property tax and other monies we can put in, and this green cell right here shows that they have a balanced budget. And we go into the year with out of deficit or surplus in this particular fund. If you have fund sources, aside from property tax, that are greater than, um, your expenses, you will have a surplus. If you have fund sources that are greater than your expenses, and you don't need property tax, then property tax will not show as a, as a revenue source in your budget. So in legal services, that's how this worksheet works. Remember, it's, it's driven by expenses, and, uh, then revenues are, are put in to match. The county commission makes decisions on revenue sources that could be used, in some cases, to make this budget, budget balance. Okay, so, um, let me go to the key budget roll-up. So now that you understand how the expense worksheets, the budget worksheets work for each department, you can see all the department's twenty-two major budgets are handled or controlled, uh, through my office, and, um, with, there are a number of other budgets that are, that are de minimis. Uh, pass-through budgets, uh, small district budgets that show up in the budget resolution, uh, these are things that are mainly outside the courthouse that, that, um, we don't put a lot of effort in, but we put a lot of effort into the twenty-two departments that we have in the courthouse and, and surrounding areas. The total expenses for everybody is fourteen million, eight hundred and sixteen thousand dollars this year. Seems like a big budget, seems a lot bigger than last year. Part of the reason for that is right here in the airport, the airport budget, uh, has total expenses of four million, seven hundred and thirty-six thousand. Reason for that is that we are getting federal grants to do a lot of work at the airport, I think in the tune of about four million dollars, so, or more than that, it's, it's a very substantial budget. When I look at the personnel expense, personnel expenses for all the budgets is six million, two hundred and eight thousand dollars. This personnel expense this year includes a three and a half percent cost of living adjustment. Uh, it's above the recommendation that I had, but the commissioners have been generous to, uh, make that, uh, color adjustment to, to wages. The balance of the expenditures are in the O-N-M, operation and maintenance side, and those amount to eight million, six hundred thousand. Uh, if you take the airport out of there, that's kind of a normal year for us. Somewhere in the neighborhood of four or five million dollars of O-N-M. O-N-M, by the way, is about thirty-eight, I took the airport out to make this calculation, but O-N-M expenses countywide are thirty-eight point five percent, thirty-eight point six percent of the budget. So with that small amount of the budget, most of it being personnel, it's hard to cut the budget on the O-N-M side. Especially when you look at, um, solid waste operations, where tipping fees are part of the O-N-M, the roads and bridge operations, a lot of materials go into the ground. Some of these, some of these, uh, O-N-M operations are huge. Public safety, seven hundred and forty-six thousand, these things just add up. So think in a normal year, about four to five million dollars. Of this, okay, so how do we fund all this stuff? One of the ways we fund our budgets is with the floating mills, and the floating mills are available for all the departments, except for solid waste, and they amount to eighty-eight point seven four floating mills. That multiplied by the mill value, twenty-seven thousand, two seventy-nine, gives us two million, four hundred and twenty thousand dollars to spend. Guess what? When I took all of your need for money and matched it against the floating mills available, we were over by about, I don't know, seven, I don't know, about one point some million? Let's see, six, yeah, about one point three million. So we cannot fund your budgets using floating mills, and the public needs to understand that the floating mills of the expenses only make up sixteen percent of the available resources. That means that to fund county government, eighty-four percent of our money comes from other places. It comes from voted mills, it comes from state shared revenues, it comes from federal shared revenues, it comes from grants, it comes from service charges, and fees that people pay. I think we are doing pretty good. The public should understand that the majority of the budget is funded by all of these other sources, with only sixteen percent floating mills. So in order to not over expend the floating mills, we have entitlement share of six hundred and eighty thousand, two hundred and forty-four dollars and eleven cents, and you can see how that is distributed among the departments. Entitlement share is like, it's basically, state entitlement share is like revenue sharing. It's from the state to the county, it can be used for any purpose in any budget. And so, um, that's how we distributed it. Two of the departments have, um, PILP money specifically designated, is payment of lieu of taxes, federal PILP money, specifically, um, uh, addressing their needs. And so we have ninety-four thousand dollars of our budget is payment of lieu of taxes, federal, uh, shared money. That makes up part of that eighty-four percent. Cash reserve has been used to make up the difference. This is the county's cash reserve. What I've done is I've taken the six hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars that we needed and distributed among general fund programs. And so if you're in a department that has cash reserve, you'll notice at the bottom of your revenue line, uh, just like with the legal services, that there's, the cash reserve is right here, cash reserve revenue is coming into that budget, which decreases their need for property tax. Property tax is always the balancing entry, but the cash reserve is a way that we made up the shortfall in our revenues. So if you look at the, um, it's hard, hard to read it, but six percent of our, of our revenues, six point seven five percent came from entitlement, six point nine three percent from the cash reserve. Okay, what does this all mean? As budget person, as an analyst, and person who's constructed budgets for a long time, this scares the heck out of me. Because that eighty-four percent that's funding, uh, the majority of our county budget, if any one of those sources goes away, we have to figure out how to replace it. So we have to be aware of the risk. For example, the legislature could decide that they don't like us having as much property tax. They could decide to limit our floating mills, um, excuse me, our voted mills, or the duration of voted mills. They could look at when they, you know, if they ever had deficit, they could look at the state entitlement share statewide and say they want all that money back. The federal government on PILP, payment of lieu of taxes, this year, the debt on the federal budget is equal to the national gross, net gross national product, G, uh, GMP. What that means is that the interest on their debt is so high, it's higher than their social security, it's higher than, uh, defense budgets, it's so high that if they decide, and there's one political party that says the best way to save money in the federal budget is to cut the budget, this is the kind of thing that they would cut. They can't hear us screaming all the way from Broadwater County when they make decisions like that. So I look at that as, as a significant risk, something we need to watch out for. So whether it's the legislature or the federal government that is, uh, a threat to these other sources of funding, we need to be aware and we need to, to be, um, raise our voices when, when needed to explain to them what's happening in our budget. This sheet and the budget documents that we've created to get there give us more information than we've ever, ever had to talk to our legislators and our federal delegation about what it takes to run county government. So, the summary is that ten million dollars is, um, ten million dollars in part of this three million dollars, so ten million, nine twenty-one, plus our cash balance, plus the entitlement, and plus basically the PILP, these are, are key revenue sources. So now you're looking at ten, eleven, thirteen million dollars. Twelve million dollars of our budget is coming from these other sources for our expenses. We're doing pretty good, but to leverage our sixteen percent floating mills, a lot of people are upset about their floating mills and the property taxes they pay. When we do an expense budget like this, what it does, what it says to the taxpayer is, we're trying to make best use of your dollars. I think that we should be smart enough to give them back more value for the, for the dollar that they pay, because we take our talents and our skills and our service ability, and we should give them more than a dollar's worth back. They give us a dollar, we give them more value back. That's what I hope we're doing. So, that is the, um, the summary of the budget. We will go into this, um, budget year on July one with these figures set. Uh, we always have opportunity to amend the budget throughout the year. That will depend on revenues and expenses, uh, the expenses being asked for. If you want to amend your budget, put money in, that's great, we want to do that, too. But this is the, the base that we start with on July one. I want to thank Debbie Kelly, Michelle Beebe, for the insane amount of work that they did, invaluable contribution to getting these budgets shaped up, uh, this year. I also want to thank, uh, Bill Malone, working with us, because one of the features of the budget that's, that we've moved to this year is that all of the utilities costs in each department, based on the building that you're in, are now funded from Bill's budget instead of your individual budget. So you will not have a share of the electric bill or the water bill in your budget, it's now being taken care of in the facilities budget. Why does that matter? It matters because what I'm doing strategically is, in this next year, we will look at each one of our facilities and see what it costs to run it. We want to look at those facilities, and we want to look at the capital repairs, the, the capital expenses we need to make, repairs we need to make to those facilities, so that those facilities are suitable for providing service to the public. And so each one of the buildings, the courthouse, the Flynn Building, the public health building, the museum, the detention area, all of those buildings will have their own capital budgets, and Bill will manage that. Now, because, the other thing that's in his budget and taken out of your budget is the money you need for the work that he does for you, and, uh, so he's going to control that money as you budgeted it. He'll control that, and then when you need work done by facilities, uh, we would like you to use a work order request, so that Bill can take those work orders, manage that work, uh, in his schedule, and give you the service you need. So, I'm guilty of this, I did it yesterday, I see Bill in his office. I have a, uh, a monitor that I want to mount on a stand that I found. "Hey, Bill, can you do this for me? Drop everything." Well, we got to stop doing that, because the other thing else that he has to drop is something that he's doing for somebody else. So I want him to be able to control his work. We pull all that facility-related, uh, money out of your budget, put it in his, and, uh, and you don't have that expense anymore, so your budget is, is whole. Those are the major changes. Now, one last thing, because I'm sure you have questions. The last thing is, the CIP, the cash balance, and the county's overall cash balance, we do not have a policy for how those balances are set. We've had, we have tradition, we have pronouncements, but we really don't have a policy that says that the clerk and recorder's office should have X amount of dollars in their CIP, or the clerk and recorder's office should have this amount of cash balance. This year, I will be suggesting in writing for the commissioners, a policy that includes what we do with excess cash, what the CIP balances should be, whether there should be any other kind of reserve- any other kind of reserve for each department, and then what is our overall reserve for the county. I mentioned in a previous meeting that there's a substantial amount of money in investments that this county has gained, either through savings or some other method. We have a huge balance of money in the county. We are not at risk if we lose any of these sources, because we have a good cash balance. But we don't have any policy on how that's going to be used. How much of the balance should we keep? How much should be possibly rebated to the taxpayers? After all, it's all their money. That's the kind of policy that we're going to set this year. So, if you're thinking that, you know, each one of the budgets has a CIP, sometimes we draw money out of the CIP to fund things in your budget this year, that is not going to matter, because those policies are going to be reset. The idea, though, and the bottom line is that you're kept whole for what you actually need. So that's something you can look forward to in between now and the next time the budget is set. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, that's kind of what I wanted to say about that, and Debeys can talk about the resolution, but if you have any questions, I'm happy to address those now.
Okay. One question. Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have any right now for the public hearing portion, but for our commissioner's discussion, probably will.
Oh, okay. I can wait till then.
Be able to resume.
Well, he just mentioned quarterly reviews. And I was... Since there's other departments here, what kinds of things are you looking at in the quarterly review, and what can be changed or adjusted at that time?
Yes, quarterly review, the primary thing is to look at the expenditure velocity, see if the expenditures... You know, on the end of the first quarter, you're going to have only a quarter of the information on expenditures for the year, but what you want to see is the velocity. Is it more than a quarter of what you budgeted? Talk about that. Talk about anything that has occurred in expenditure. It's not going to be on personnel side, because that's pretty well set, but on the O and M side, is there anything that happened that you didn't budget for, that you didn't expect? And is... Are you going to go over that particular object code in the account in which it sits? We probably will not have to make any adjustments until maybe the third quarter, between object codes, if necessary. In fact, I don't really like to make adjustments in object codes, because I want to see what we learned from the performance at the end of the year. At the end of the year, we know how accurate we were in the budget. And each year, if we can get more accurate, then we'll be fine. But it's really, how's the spending going? Is there anything unusual in the velocity of spending that we want to take notice of, report back to you, or make adjustments for, or otherwise? That'll be the main thing. The second thing would be, of the... In the budget, if there are any need for amendments to the budget, then that's where we would anticipate putting an amendment together for all departments, for the commissioner to review. The way I like to do amendments is to have a narrative description of what that amendment is, because it's a significant departure from the budget. In fact, anytime you're going to over exceed any of your budget line items, you should probably do a budget amendment. Instead of Debbie doing it at the end of the year, through the accounting system, what we do is we declare what those amendments are to the commission, you make a decision on that decision to spend money, or to gain money.
Thanks.
Okay, is there any public comment regarding the final budget? Any public comment? Any public comment? Okay. With that, I will close our public hearing and reopen our normal, our regular commission meeting for a continued discussion. You brought up some great points, Bill, on our budget, the... I mean, as far as for the amount that is truly funded out of property taxes, and how the county leverages that to fund the rest of the budgets that we need to keep the county going. I think that's important. It's probably something that maybe a lot of folks don't understand. It's a tough job, and I know that we've all probably lost a little bit of sleep here this past month, trying to figure all that kind of stuff out, so.
I think the department heads should be commended for... Because they have a... They have an area of expertise, and they're drawing resources to themselves to provide great service. They're doing a fantastic job.
Yeah, that's a great point. And so, part of what I was doing is where I was going through all these budget worksheets I was looking at, how everybody's budget, whether it was an increase or a decrease, and I would say that, on the average, is probably maybe a one-point-five percent increase in some budgets, some of them decreased seventeen percent. So, our elected officials and our managers have done a fantastic job trying to control their expenses. I think we know, all know, that we're not sure what's going to come out of this next legislative session, and where we're going to be out with our economy. This really was kind of a belt-tightening budget for us. That's kind of how it worked out. So, I think there is opportunity. I think with some of these budget worksheets, I think there were still a few budget lines that needed to be removed, as far as like cleanup, right?
Right.
And that'll be ongoing. You'd be working with department heads and managers to do that.
Yeah, Debbie, Michelle, and I are going to be making sure that everything you see here syncs with Black Mountain, so that the accounting system still works independent of... Independently. I'm going to make this available, this worksheet available to everybody. You can see that there's a breakdown of personnel expenses by department. Here's where the floating mill revenue goes by department. That big blue thing is public safety. You get a lot of floating mills, as well as devoted levy, but that's not what this is. This is floating mills. So if you get a tiny bit of floating mills, you're probably way down here. Personnel expenses by department, this is a function of the size of your department, it's true. Except the legal services department, they seem to be pretty well paid. Yeah. I'm jealous of you. But...
I've got more gray hair than you, for one.
You do?
It's dyed.
Is that possible? Anyway, I'll make this available to you, so you can look at the detail.
And I think the other thing that we realize as we're going through the budgets, that all of the departments run pretty lean and mean.
They really do.
There's no excess. They do a great job of managing what they have, so. Want to make sure that they know that. And then, I believe last year, we had to do a budget amendment because we did not know the value of the homes. Is that correct, Debbie? So let's go up and, please, if you could, talk about that again. So everybody expects that that may be happening again.
Yeah. Excuse me. Debbie Kelly, Finance Office, Commissioners. First, just a quick thank you to Bill, because his work here was really good for me, because he was able to put into this what I see and have known through Black Mountain, but could not express or make available, to make it easy for everybody else to understand. So I thank him for that. So kind of like last year, the State Department of Revenue and their assessments kind of re-looked at things to base the value of their taxes on the value of your homes. So whether it's a hundred thousand, or three hundred, or six hundred thousand, depend on what your assessed value is. And of course, some people were up in arms because they didn't understand it, others, oh, well, that's just it is, it's more normal what I thought it would be, it's finally, you know, they're finally redoing it. So when they redid all that and the resolutions for us to go through, that's kind of what we're doing today, is our resolution is based on that, on the value of those homes, to know, so people know, like Bill said, how much really they're getting taxed versus others. And so that's what the resolution is.
We won't really know that until September.
But the actual value is correct. So then, in September, after we get our values from Department of Revenue, we will amend our resolution to include those actuals, so that there's more detail. So like the permissive, the roads, those kinds of things that get their set mills, and how it's factored into, will be delineated in that final resolution. Right now, we don't know all that yet. We're basing our budgets off of last year's amounts, so we've just got real general terms.
Right. You know, and I think another thing that probably didn't come out in Bill's discussion is, is we built this budget based on last year's revenue.
Yes.
So we did not build it on what we're projecting that we will receive, so...
The few that we did know or have ahead of time, like the entitlement, those are things that we did factor in here, but most of it is all the property taxes and PILT, that we don't have a clue, grants that are in the process, that aren't available yet till this next year. Like, no Health Department, they have always come, get some that show up after the budget is set, that they get. That will be included, as we know that as well, so.
Right. Another thing, too, is we don't know this number yet, is how many delinquent taxes we will have out there.
Right.
And that will be an impact on our overall budget as well. So we're trying to protect ourselves from some of those risks, as Bill mentioned, looking into the future.
Yeah, and we've been working with Department of Revenue. Of course, solid waste, have found some things we're working with that, which will hopefully help the other side of the taxpayers with homes, and knowing who's not paid, and help with the delinquent side of things, and make sure we're getting everybody covered. Because I think there was some years where people got off with not paying taxes, because they didn't get it in their system, so...
Hopefully, we solve that.
Yes. We put a lot of work into it, we put a lot of work into that this year, so that'll be kind of...
Yeah.
Nice to see.
Maybe that's an opportunity to thank Department of Revenue for.
Yes, yes.
All the work that they've helped us do in this past couple of years, in finding those homes that weren't taxed, and actually, they helped us in our solid waste issue of trying to find out where we had our deficit there as well. So thank you for those folks. We're glad to have them back in our building. I guess that's kind of really all I had. Anything else from you guys?
No, you went through... Everybody went through my list.
All right. Very good. I think, go ahead and read the resolution, Debbie, and we'll go from there.
A little froggy today, so, excuse me. So this is for the Commissioners, resolution to be set forth, adopting the final budget and setting appropriation authority for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2024, and ending June 30th, 2025. Whereas Section 764030 MCA provides that the governing body shall adopt the final budget by resolution. The resolution must, A, authorize appropriations to defray the expenses or liabilities for the fiscal year, B, establish legal spending limits at the level of detail in the resolution, and C, include any increase in property taxes, including an increase authorized under 1510420 subsection 1, and the amount by which property taxes will increase on homes valued at one hundred, three hundred, and six hundred thousand respectively. Whereas Section 764020 requires that a preliminary annual operating budget must be prepared for the local government. And whereas Section 764021 requires that the governing body shall cause a notice of public hearing on the preliminary or amended budget to be published. And whereas Section 764024 provides that the governing body must hold a public hearing in accordance with the notice given pursuant to Section 764021 MCA. And whereas, the Board of County Commissioners held a public hearing on June 26, 2024, where residents of the county were allowed to express their concerns about the proposed budget. And whereas, the Board of County Commissioners has reviewed the proposed budget, received the estimated ending cash balances for all county funds, made changes to the budget as deemed necessary following the public hearing, and from input by elected officials and department heads, and computed the estimated taxes, fees, and assessments needed to fund the fiscal year 2025 budget. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Broadwater County, that the final budget, after any amendments to the preliminary budget, and after considering any public comment, is adopted. This resolution authorizes, A, appropriations to defray the expenses or liabilities for the fiscal year, B, it sets the legal spending limits at the county fund level. Fund level detail is stated in the formal budget document and established in the county's accounting system, C, an increase or decrease in property taxes due to MCA 1510420 calculations for permissive levies and/or voted levies for a home valued at one hundred, three hundred, and six hundred thousand is included in this fiscal budget. The effective date of this resolution is July 1st, 2024, even if the resolution is adopted after that date, dated this 26th day of June, 2024.
Okay, good. So something that is important is that this statute was mentioned several times in this resolution, the MCA 1510420. And just to refresh everybody's memory, what that means is that property tax value can only increase in the county one-half a percent of the previous three years' rate of inflation. So, we get questions a lot of the time, we see, Barbara County's growing, where's all that money? Well, we get one-half a percent of the rate of inflation, that's...
And to further explain that, Mako had a real good slurp on this, that the one-half, the average rate of compounding inflation, was determined by taking the cubed root of the CPI for December of '23, or in our case, it will be '24, divided by the CPI for December of 2020, or in '21, and subtracting one, and multiplying the result by fifty percent. So if somebody really liked to do the math and take and go do the research and homework, they could plug this in themselves every year and kind of anticipate what that half a percent might look like.
What was the percentage?
This year, our inflation rate for 2025 is 2.8.
Okay.
I mean, any official verifications by Department of Revenue, which came out early in April, and I haven't heard anything different. So, when we get our sheets, since last year it was 2.46, this year it'll be 2.8 when we factor all this.
Ms. Chairman, members of the commission, ladies and gentlemen, be aware that they gave... We can basically have 2.8. We gave everybody 3.5 COLA. It may be a problem doing that in the future, especially when you look at the size of the personnel budget, that percentage gets bigger each time you do that.
That's exactly right.
And that is, unless we start laying off people, that is an expense we'll always have.
Right.
And people make more money, so.
No, you're exactly right.
It's... That's the kind of stuff I look at.
Yep. And I think the other thing that's worth pointing out is, I know the inflation that is affecting all of us, as personally in our lives, affects us here at the county the same. The cost of fuel, the cost of goods, everything that we do affects us in the same manner. All right, well, thank you again, everybody, for all your hard work, and there's still more to do before September.
The job's never finished.
Second week, second week of... What was that? I can't remember that statute. It's the funniest one. It's the second day of the second week in the...
In September.
In September.
Like, the first Tuesday of the second week.
There you go.
Yeah. It's a very wordy, weird way to look at, just say the first Tuesday of the month and be done, but...
Yeah. All right, any other discussion?
Nope.
Any other discussion? Is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
Well, move to adopt a resolution, adopting the final operating budget, setting appropriation authority for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2024, and ending June 30th, 2025.
A second half?
Motion has been made and accepted to adopt a resolution that is adopting the final operating budget and setting appropriation authority for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2024, and ending June 30th, 2025. Is there any public comment? Any public comment? Any public comment? Okay, hearing done. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, the motion carries. Aye. Any opposed, the motion carries. Thank you, everybody. Okay. Next on our agenda, and we're like way behind, discussion this decision. Deputy County Attorney Kalen Minor, Resolution for Establishment of Fees for Processing Petitions to Abandon a County Road and Petitions to Discontinue a Street or Alley in an Unincorporated Townsite.
Chairman Folkford, Kalen Minor, Deputy County Attorney. This resolution has been provided to you all numerous times in the past. No significant changes were made to it at this time. Chairman Folkford and I just simply am here to answer questions, if there are any from the public or from you, the Commissioners, as to any of the details regarding these petitions and the fees and the costs associated with acting upon these petitions as the county.
Need to reorganize myself here.
Okay.
Okay, so if I remember right, our discussion was, or part of what started this discussion was the cost that it was borne by the taxpayers of Broadwater County whenever these issues came before us. And this is to set the policy going forward, how that will be handled. Does that sound correct?
You are correct, sir.
So I guess some of the highlights, and you might have to fill me in, Kay, some of them were the the professional surveyor, how that was going to be handled, whether, first off, whether we needed one. The next was if the petitioner was going to select their own surveyor, if we're going to appoint one. The main thing being there, that the cost of that is still borne by the petitioner, and that there is a $500 fee to accompany the petition, to defray all the costs that Angie's office has in, all of the administrative things she has to do for this petition. What else?
You have accurately summarized all of the changes, Chairman Folkford. I didn't intend for you to have to do that, sorry. I, I thought that, you know, we were, we were tracking them better. I apologize for not offering that information up. But no, this is, we clearly didn't have any guidance in the past, which is why we've made this, this new policy and this petition to establish these fees, and it's absolutely not based on, it's not coming out of the blue. It's, it's based on the factual costs that are being borne by the county and the tremendous expenses being put out by the clerk and recorder's office. Hence, the designation of where those application or those petition fees go to. They go to the clerk and recorder's office, the survey account.
And we actually had some great comment, public comment to help guide this document as well.
Yes, that public comment, Chairman Folkford, it was very, very thoughtful, and it's very much appreciated. I always want to hear from people who are on the ground, working in these capacities. Additionally, Chairman Folkford, Commissioner Randolph had some great edits that she contributed as well. So it was a real collaborative effort in this sense.
Very good. Any other comments or questions from the Commissioners?
No, I am very happy with the final outcome.
All right. Angie, you're probably happy to see it.
Yes, thank you for getting this through works. It will be excellent for our office to have this solidified. I appreciate it.
All right, if there are no other comments or questions, is there a motion?
I would move to approve the resolution for establishment of fees for processing petitions to abandon a county road and petitions to discontinue a state, a street or alley in an unincorporated town or town site. I have a second vote.
Okay, motion is made and seconded to adopt a resolution for the establishment of fees for processing petitions and abandoning a county road and petitions to discontinue a street or alley in an unincorporated town or town site. Is there any public discussion? Any public discussion? Any public discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, the motion carries. Okay. Next on our agenda, Public Works Director TJ Gravely, Road Ordinance on Mill Street in Raidersburg.
Good morning, Commissioners. TJ Gravely, Public Works Director. So I'm bringing before you today a possibility of putting an ordinance in to establish lowering the speed, reducing the speed on Mill Street from Raidersburg. This petition was brought to me by a landowner out there. I do have a copy of at least 10 landowners out there that has been attested to by Angie, our clerk and recorder. I don't know at this point if you guys want me to read this, because we're going to have to do this like three different times, or two different times.
Yeah, so maybe just for everybody's benefit, ordinance is different than a resolution. It has a first reading, which will be today. There will be a second reading and an adoption.
So our second reading will be July 10th, and I'll talk about that at the end, and it'll be in effect 30 days after that. So you're looking at like August 12th, because the date actually falls on us on a weekend where it wouldn't be posted.
Okay, first off, let's go ahead and talk about maybe your process. You received the petition?
I received the petition roughly 10 days ago. From that point, I took it to Angie and let her verify, her clerk and recorder, and let her clarify, verify with a collaborative effort to make sure that these were legit. And we had, I believe, 13 on the petition, and some of them are really hard to decipher, the handwriting. We were able to come up with 10, which according to MCA is what we had to have. The speed limit up on Mill Street right now is 35 miles an hour, and it is right off of Highway 2, or 285, sorry. And basically in Raidersburg, so from there to the top of the intersection of Keating Gulch, it's 35 miles an hour, past all the houses. As you guys well know, or some of you know, this is a heavily traveled road for side-by-sides motorcycles, basically all off-highway vehicles, and they create a lot of dust. And I think that was probably the main concern behind this. A lot of kids running around out there, and it was more of a safety issue than anything that was presented to us, or presented to my office. From there, with the help of Deputy County Attorney Minor, we drew up an ordinance, and I believe we've got it right now.
Yep, good. And then part of your process was also to go out and observe.
It was part of the process to go out and observe what was actually going on. We had a traffic counter out in that area not very long ago, and it did observe speeds that were rather quick. I'm not going to give you the exact numbers, but let's just say they were a little faster than 35 mile an hour.
I had opportunity to talk to several residents from Raidersburg, and they truly appreciated that device there, and they said it did make a difference, and they could see people that have, as soon as that light came on, it told them they were exceeding the speed limit, they did slow down.
When the reds and blues flash at you, it usually draws your attention.
Yeah. So I guess I'm thankful for the opportunity that you and our public work, or public safety have worked together in purchasing that unit. I know there's some talk of maybe another one someday, we'll see, but it has been working for us, so.
Anybody that has seen this, there's been a lot of people that have actually called into the office and thanked us for having that out there, because like you said, it has brought the attention to the people. It actually slowed the public down.
Yep, yep, good. All right, I mean, you guys have any comments or questions?
No, it's a good idea. Very well written, ready to go.
Okay.
Okay. An ordinance to establish the speed limit on Mill Street, county road located west of Highway 285 in Raidersburg, Broadwater County, Montana, and to provide penalties for the violation thereof. Whereas Broadwater County Commissioners have received a request by petition to create a 25 mile an hour speed limit to set on Mill Street, whereas the current speed restriction on Mill Street is 35 miles an hour. Whereas Montana Code annotated MCA 7142113 grants the Board of County Commissioners the authority to establish a special speed limit by ordinance in accordance with MCA 618310 on any county road. Whereas MCA 618310 allows that if authority, local authority determines that the speed permitted under Montana Code 618303 is greater than is reasonable and safe under the conditions found to exist on the highway, the local, a local authority may set a reasonable and safe limit that decreases speed limit. MCA 61813 allows local authority to set a reasonable safe speed limit, decrease the limit outside the urban district to not less than 25 miles an hour on an unpaved road. Whereas Mill Street is an unpaved county road that is outside the urban district, and whereas the Broadwater County Road Department analyzes, analysis indicates that the current speed of 35 miles an hour is unreasonable and unsafe from Highway 285 to the intersection of Keating Gulch Road. However, the 25 mile an hour speed limit set from 285 to the intersection of Keating Gulch Road would be reasonable and safe under the conditions found. Now therefore, it be ordained that the Board of County Commissioners of Broadwater County, that the speed limit ordinance on Mill Street be enacted as follows. Section 1, Speed Limit Established. A regulatory speed limit of 25 miles an hour shall be established for Mill Street from Highway 285 to the intersection of Keating Gulch Road. Section 2, The Posting. Upon receiving notice of the regulatory, regulatory speed limit established by ordinance and after the passage of at least 30 days from the date of the ordinance being adopted, the road and bridge shall erect the appropriate signs, giving drivers notice of the regulatory speed limit established by ordinance. Section 3 is the penalty, penalty for the violation of the ordinance or any provision thereof shall be enforcing according to Title 61, Chapter 8, MCA and Broadwater County Code, if such is in effect at the time of the violation and any other applicable state or local law. The servability, if any part of this ordinance is held to be invalid, such invalidity shall not affect other parts which can be given effect without an invalid part to end the provisions of this ordinance to be servable. Duration, the duration shall remain in effect until repealed or suspended by other legislative or judicial action. Codification, if Broadwater County adopts the Broadwater County, a Broadwater County Code, the speed limit described in the ordinance shall be listed, referring to the purpose and findings of this ordinance.
Can you give me the date again for the second reading, TJ?
I think July 10th.
Okay.
And then you're looking at 30 days after that.
Okay.
Unfortunately, they probably should have brought this to us a lot sooner than they did. Because of the timeframe, they're still going to get dusted out for quite a bit of time through the summer.
Yeah, and, and that might be a discussion that we have, if there's something we can help them there. We'll see how that works. You know, so just for everybody's benefit, if the road is not posted, what is the speed limit in the state of Montana?
On a county road?
Yeah.
Same as your two-lane highways, seven miles an hour.
All right. Good enough. We know that, but I always like to let.
I did not know that. I did not know that.
Yeah. So that's why we post.
The only way that can be reversed is if the county does a blanket over the whole county, but I'm sorry. The road department does not have that in their budget to post every single road that way.
Yeah, nor does our, our sheriff's.
Nor does the sheriff's office have the ability to patrol it.
I have one quick question, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
Do you see, in something like this, do you see a significant reduction in speed just by posting? Because it's one of those things where people, people ignoring it right now at 35, why are they going to pay attention to it at 25?
No.
Just a question. Okay.
But there's a legal reason for doing it.
There's a legal reason for doing that. Do I see it without patrol? No. And that was relayed when I talked to the gentleman that brought the petition forward. Without enforcement, it's not going to help you. I can put up all the signs in the world, but as Commissioner Folkford said, without a posting at all, we don't have a leg to stand on.
Right, okay. Thanks.
Any questions or comments?
Nope.
Okay, so I think we have to do, approve an initial adoption.
Correct.
So, is there a motion?
I move to do a first initial adoption of the ordinance to establish a speed limit on Mill Street, county road, located west of Highway 285 in Raidersburg, Broadwater County, Montana, and to provide penalties for violation thereof, and the speed limit would be 25 miles an hour.
Or a second?
A second. Sorry. On to the next slide.
Motion is made and seconded.
Jessica's there.
To approve and initially adopt at this first reading the in-ordinance to establish a speed limit on Mill Street, a county road located west of Highway 285 in Raidersburg, Broadwater County, Montana, and to provide penalties for violation thereof. Is there any public discussion? Any public discussion? Any public discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, motion carries. All right, so this will be back on our agenda, July 10th, for the second reading and possible adoption, final adoption.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, TJ.
Do you want to keep this document, Angie, and bring it to us on the 10th, or would you like us to, to hold on to it?
I can hold on to it.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Here's a paper clip for it. All right, next, Jess, sorry you had to sit through all of this.
No worries.
Discussion Mosquito District Manager Jessica Bushnell, mosquito control program agreement between JSH Inc. and Broadwater County.
So Jessica Bushnell, B-U-S-H-N-E-L-L, infectious weed and mosquito coordinator for Broadwater County. The Three Forks Mosquito Board read through and approved this agreement between Broadwater County and JHS. I really want to thank Deputy Attorney Minor for bringing this quickly, and then the board for reviewing it. This agreement basically is for the district operations at the Three Forks Mosquito District between us and JHS to provide those services. It is for this current year of mosquito operations, and basically I'm asking for you guys to approve it. Any questions?
I don't think so. I mean, we had, we kinda had this discussion in our mosquito board meeting, and I think we're all up to speed on that, so.
Looks great.
The only thing that I want to stress is that we do need invoices to be paid.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, and we've included that in there.
Yes, that was our big change.
Yes. Under one C.
But otherwise, pretty simple agreement, so.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other comments or questions for Jessica?
I don't have anything.
Well, is there a motion?
I would move to approve the mosquito control program agreement with JHS Inc. and Broadwater County.
I will second that.
Okay, is it, and it's actually the mosquito district of Broadwater County, is that correct?
Yes, it is the Three Forks Mosquito District. It is separately funded.
Mosquito.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve the mosquito control program agreement between JAS and the Three Forks Mosquito District of Broadwater County. Is there any public discussion? Any public discussion? Any public discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And then, let's see, I don't have the copy with all the dates in it, Jessica, do you? I got the blank one. Thank you very much. That's why we count on you.
And while we are signing, what's a mosquito update?
So trap counts are still really, really low, and our landing counts are really low. So our landing counts right now are less than 10 outside of the district and less than two inside the district.
Oh wow.
And our trap counts are lower yet, so I'm excited. We have the new walls unit for the towns and mosquito district has been installed. I'm gonna mount the battery today and begin initial calibration, and then if I need further assistance, I'm gonna have them come out and help. But talking with the tech and looking at the unit, I think that we can get pretty well calibrated. And then I would, because we're so low, I would love to get it rolling this week so that Jess can get out and roll larva sighting, since she's not fogging. So that'll help keep our numbers low.
You know what, Jessica, I messed up the signature page, and I just realized I am no longer the chair for...
I thought when, when we had the discussion that...
I was, is that okay?
No, but I, when you were, I think it's in there as the commissioner chair.
Okay.
I thought we had that discussion in the meeting.
All right, well, it is, so I get to sign it twice, right?
Yeah.
You had me panicked for a minute, that you were gonna be like, I'm not the chair of the mission anymore.
All right. Send that to Angie.
So yeah, that's where we're at mosquito-wise.
Perfect. Thank you.
So we haven't had a chance to try our new...
Nope, it's, we got it mounted, Bill and Ken came over yesterday, we mounted. What we actually did is put it in the old mosquito truck that had been in operation before, we replaced it with the Colorado a couple of years ago, so that if there are times where the weed crew and mosquito crew need to be out at the same time, we're not running into issues.
Oh, gotcha.
So we'll do a little bit of stuff to that truck to get it up, but it'll be a lot better timing-wise, so that if the larva sighting isn't affected by as many factors as fogging, so Jessica could do larva sighting when she wasn't able to fog, so it opens up more opportunities for us.
Yeah.
And we had the equipment, so rather than run into conflicts for time, I think that'll make, make good sense.
Very good, Will. Excited to see it work?
I am too.
All right, I don't think there's anything else on our agenda. So, Will.
Ma'am.
Let's finish up with some mail. Okie doke, I have the minutes from May 29th, June 3rd, June 5th, and June 10th.
Oh, June 5th it said.
Is there one more?
Uh, let me read them again. Oh, there is, it's a little one that's stuck on the back. Thank you, Angie. And June 24th.
Five twenty-nine, six five, six ten. Correct.
I'm gonna get it sorted out here. Six, yeah, I'll just, I'll do that again, May 29th, June 3rd, June 5th, June 10th, and June 24th.
I would move to approve the minutes from May 29th, June 3rd, June 5th, June 10th, and June 24th.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve the minutes from May 29th, June 3rd, June 5th, June 10th, and June 24th. Any public discussion? Any public discussion? Any public discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Lot of signing here. That's what happens when we're gone for a little bit, right?
Just a lot going on this time.
Okie doke, here we go. We have one set of claims. And the amount is $4,488.95.
Move to approve claims for $4,488.95. I'll second that motion.
Motion's made and seconded to claim the amount to $4,488.95. Any public discussion? Any public discussion? Any public discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, I think that's all that I have. Do you guys have anything else?
I do not.
Okay, cool. Thanks.
Putting my pen away too early.
Okay, with that, I guess we are adjourned. 11:45. Thank you, everybody. I forgot to announce our working meeting, but that's okay, it's on the agenda.